Welcome to the Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022 virtual session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Pandeleon?
Here.
Alderman Morris is absent. Alderman Karas?
Here.
Alderman Romo?
Here.
Alderman Notes?
Hi, here.
Alderman Preschlag?
Here.
Alderman Goshgarian?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, I have to make the official opening announcement. In accordance with state statute, I have made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this February 22nd, 2022 city council meeting will be hopefully the last meeting held remotely. If all goes well, so. We anticipate this is our last Zoom meeting, and I think we're all looking forward to getting back in person again, so. First item on the agenda is reports of city officers, comments by the mayor. I have one item on the agenda tonight. I have an appointment to the Senior Resources Commission of Wendy McKirn from Ward Two. I would entertain a motion to approve her appointment.
Still moved.
Hey, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Romo?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Goshgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is comments by the city manager, so I will turn it over to Jason.
Great, thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. Good evening. I have one item tonight, and as you saw in your council packet on tonight's omnibus agenda is a recommendation for city council approval of the purchase and installation of a new splash pad at Townline Park. And as you may recall, this project was tentatively included in the list of funded projects reviewed and supported by the city council at your November Capitol Workshop. And because some members of the community, or perhaps the council, may be unfamiliar with splash pads, or perhaps people are just interested in, you know, this project specifically, I've asked our Parks and Forestry Superintendent Chuck Myers to provide a brief presentation highlighting the proposed scope of work. And I'll just say that, you know, the staff level, I know we're really excited to add this new amenity to our parks portfolio, and also to add a new and safe water feature to the west side of town, given the greater distance for residents to take their kids to the beach. They really are a wonderful feature for kids of all ages, but especially for younger children. And I think that was important, recognizing a lot, and timely recognizing, you know, the influx of new residents with young children and their families. So advancement of these funds is being requested to accelerate the project schedule to ensure that the splash pad can be installed and fully operational for at least a part of this summer, and that's why it's for you tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chuck, and he'll be happy to address any questions you have following the brief presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm gonna try to switch over here real quick and pull up a PowerPoint. So with this project, we did work with New Toys. You may remember that with our playground projects, we often work with them as a consultant, and they do the design work for us. So we work with them. They typically are rep for landscape structures and aquatics. Aquatics is the branch that deals with splash pads. So these are companies that we've worked with in the past. Well, other than aquatics, this is our first splash pad, but they have a great reputation as well. As we work with New Toys, it's always good. They help guide us with a lot of the ADA requirements. We've got a really good relationship with them, so we continue to use them whenever we can. I also wanted to point out that this project is going through Sourcewell. I'm sure you remember, they've, they are a procurement company that cooperative that we work with on purchasing equipment. Public Works has brought equipment through that program as well. So we did work with that, or we did have the advantage of using them for this project, which also gave us a discount of 5% on the overall project. So as you're probably aware, splash pads have gotten really popular over the last few years. We see them all over Chicagoland. Of course, this is our first one. So we did do a lot of research and looked at a few of them in other communities and worked with New Toys to try to develop something that we thought would be a pretty exciting feature for our residents. So as far as the site, this is Townline. We decided on Townline due to a number of reasons, but one, one large one is that this is a community park. We thought it would be good to start with a community park, does serve the whole community. We also realized that Townline had all of the infrastructure in place already, so that was a good way to save a lot of money by not having to run new water, new electric, or anything like that. So it has a large parking area. It has a playground right next to it, so there were a lot of reasons why we chose Townline. Specifically, you can see the area that we designated, the playground here that was built a few years, just probably five years ago, and then the pavilion just to the east of it. So it does lend itself to tying directly into the utilities right off of the building. And also, it does provide a lot of areas for parents to watch their kids. There's, we will have some benches in the area, but there are shelters, there's some trees in the area. The pavilion, of course, is right there. The other benefit is that the restrooms are also right there, so it seemed like a really good spot to put this. And this, this, this area was not planned for any other athletic use or anything like that, so it seemed like a really good fit for us. So the splash pad is about 1,500 square feet. So it fits in here nicely. We do have to move one small oak tree, but that's it. So with that, we set out to do some design, and this just illustrates that it is laid out in a way for different age kids to enjoy it. So the top zone is kind of the gentler stuff, the low-volume type spray features. And then the dynamic zone is for kids seven and older. So that, that's more of the features that have higher volume of water, higher pressure, that kind of thing. And then the family zone, which is good for anyone to play at any age. So that's how it was laid out. These are a few of the features that we selected. I will note, too, that we decided to go with what is called a drain-through system. So the drain-away, or drain-away system, there's two types of splash pads that are out there right now. One is a recirculation system, where, just as the name would imply, the water just recirculates throughout it. It is a much more expensive system. It's a lot more maintenance, it's maintained more like a pool, you have to add chemicals and all that kind of stuff. Typically used in larger splash pads, or in splash pads that are used for a greater length of time. In, you know, we only will probably use this for three months a year typically, when the weather cooperates. So with that, we decided to go with a drain-through system, meaning that we will use the city water supply, and so we always have freshwater coming into it, and it just flows through. So with that, we picked a system that would be very efficient, a low, low water volume. Some of the things to highlight on this photo, the largest feature is right there in the center. That's the hydro helix. It actually spins around, kids can spin it. That's what creates that little helix effect as it's spinning around and drops from about nine feet tall. That is the tallest feature. Another piece, just to the left of there, you can see this one. It actually has two different, you can see it down here in the bottom, the Uniflow, a higher volume spray coming out on the one side, and then a mist on the other. And you can see various different water spouts that are popping up, arched water features that can be adjusted. This end is the top end of it. So you see the frog that emits water out of the frog's mouth, a little umbrella-type feature that the water rolls off the top for younger kids. Again, it's a more gentler end down here. So a lot of different water features. It's run by an activator right here, where kids can just go up to it. We preset the amount of time that it'll run. It does not, it's not on a timer or anything like that. Kids can go up to it, start it, it'll run for 20 minutes, or however long we want to run it. So next slide is just a close-up, just a different view, showing the same features and how it would look at the park. So with that, the process going forward, as far as the timeline goes, we, if we receive approval tonight, we're able to order the equipment early March. And by doing that, we can have the construction going by May, and then we would be able to potentially open the new feature on June 17th. So mid-June would be our goal for opening it up. So it's important that we get this rolling now, that's why we are asking to advance the funds. There is a bit of a lead time to get the equipment. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Just have a quick comment, and that is, I'm thrilled to see this come forth. I think it's gonna add a lot of value to our community, for the families, and, and so, thank you. It really looks great.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, go ahead. And I do recall surveys done in the past where one of the comments, or several people made comments about how we were lacking any sort of aquatic park, you know, other than the beach itself. And so I've always felt there was a desire, a need for something like this. Certainly, I think this is a nice contribution to the, to the city, and I think it'll be well received. Is the design that you have modeled after something that's actually there? Or was it custom designed for, you know, application that we have here?
It is, it is somewhat custom, the New Toys, when we work with them. We do like, we did like the idea of using landscape structures, because the playground is so close. A lot of the color matching that took, we can match it up with the playground. It isn't exactly the same colors. We did add some blue into it, but it was selected from, you know, various different equipment that we could select from, but it was somewhat specific to trying to keep the water volume lower, to keep the system demand down. So yeah, it was somewhat custom.
And Chuck, in terms of the project cost, you have $300,000 here. To what extent are we dealing with, and that includes the contingency, to what extent are we dealing with fixed costs, or are these costs going to be subject to future changes?
They are, 273,000 of it is the, the fixed cost. That does include the equipment and all of the installation. One of the things that's nice about this project, from my perspective, for our staff, is that we're not going to build it. A lot of times, we do our own playgrounds, but in this case, it's somewhat specialized. So we're, the whole thing is contracted, and that is all covered under Sourcewell. So they've had different subcontractors out to the site, they've looked at it. So they're relatively certain that this is a pretty straightforward project.
Yeah, and the number is a good number.
It is, it is.
Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Notes?
With regard to the water not being recycled, is there an opportunity to capture that and use it to irrigate the fields, so that it's just not put into the sewer system?
Yeah, good question. We, we did look into that. At this time, it is going to be put into the sanitary, because it is chlorinated water. But it was a concern of ours also. We, we decided at this point, with costs and time being an issue, we decided that it would be better to get it in. It is just a pipe that it will drain from. So at some point, we could drain it into a feature where it either would be recaptured, like you mentioned, for irrigation, but also, it could be used just by keeping it on-site, by putting a bio swale, or a cistern, or something like that, that you could hold the water, dechlorinate it, and use it. So at this time, we're not planning on doing it. It would add a substantial amount of cost to it, but it would not be that difficult to retrofit it in the future. Yes, Alderman Romo?
Um, I like Alderman Notes' comment, and I would second that, you know, sort of encouraging that we look at some way to recycle the water. I think it looks great, it looks like a lot of fun. I do think that we're gonna have to provide a lot of shelter for parents, because I can see them baking in the sun out there while their kids are cooling off. So should keep that in mind. Um, I just had a couple of questions. First of all, what is, what's on the bottom of it? What sort of padding or what have you for safety and grip, so the kids aren't slipping? What's on the bottom of that splash pad?
It is just a textured concrete, so they're, they're not gonna slip. It does have a texture to it, but typically, they are concrete. There, I don't know if you remember, in the, in the picture, there is an outer rim. It's a five-foot rim around the whole area that typically doesn't get wet. And that's where we could put benches if we decided to do that, but it is pretty much just concrete.
And my second question is, who's supervising this?
It won't be supervised. We don't have the staff to do that. I mean, I think in most parks, these aren't, as we've looked, they're not typically supervised by staff. So it will just be, it, it's fully functional with the push of that activator. Kids can turn it on, and, you know, as you know, the, the park doesn't have, it's not lit at night. It is something that we're gonna keep an eye on, though, because technically, you could do it in the middle of the night if you want, but we'd rather kids not go out there and do that. So we'll be monitoring it and making, you know, making adjustments if need be, but it is an on-demand kind of a system.
Is that typical for these systems? That, the one in Highland Park, is that, you know, it's right there as you're coming off the expressway. Is that not supervised? It seems to me, I kind of saw like lifeguard-y things there, but maybe I'm wrong.
It just depends on the size. A lot of them are not. These smaller park features are typically not supervised. Some of, we went to one in Waukegan. One, they have a couple of structures, actually, and one of them was supervised, but it was much larger. So this is fairly typical.
And I was just gonna say, you know, we'll, we'll certainly coordinate with our risk management provider if we need to provide any signage stating that, you know, children play at their own risk, then certainly, we can have that added.
Yep.
Please, please do that.
Yeah. This is a new one for us, so we realize we're gonna be monitoring, you know, how things go with operations. We'll be monitoring that pretty closely.
Thank you.
George, if I may. Thank you, Chuck, and that's a great presentation, and it certainly is a trend that we're seeing throughout the Midwest and the rest of the country. I think just worth note, for those who are watching, a splash pad was mentioned as part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan that we approved three years ago. And again, this is the following, following the theme of an ongoing process of evaluating our inventory and seeing what the needs and the wants of the community are. And this is right in line with it, and I think hats off to the Parks and Rec Board and to staff for looking at this master plan and using it as a working document. And I think it's, it's important for us to take note of that. And we don't just come up with these master plans to collect dust on a shelf. They're there for a reason, and there's an awful lot of time and effort that goes into these things. The one comment I have, though, about reusing that water that Alderman Notes brings up. We've got water problems, and I, although I would concur that it would be nice to reuse that water and, you know, use gray water, I think our fields are pretty darn soggy as it is. So it's, it's sort of a nice thought, but probably one that might be directed better in the state of Arizona than in Lake Forest. But, you know, I'm all about what we can do to make it better, though. Thank you.
Yeah, one, one note on that, too. If you didn't realize, the irrigation at Townline is actually on a well. That's, that's the only one that is on a well. So it is already coming out of the groundwater there, just, just a side note there.
I find that amazing, it's so close to a water tower.
Yeah.
But that's true. Aside from that idiosyncrasy, I guess I paused when you said that it can work with an activator, and the activator can be activated at any time, 24 hours a day. I'm wondering, for safety reasons, inviting problems, that you maybe, if you could, set a timer on it, so during off-hours, you don't have some element showing up at the park and setting it off and causing a little ruckus at 2:00 AM in the morning, partying there. So I guess my brothers would be to see if you can control that, that activator, so it doesn't invite mischief.
Yep, we will, we will be looking into that. Thanks.
Alderman Weber?
Did Alderman Karas have a comment? She, welcome to go first. Okay, I do.
I was looking at a different part of the screen, my, my bad.
Okay. I was just wondering if there were, there was a plan for some sort of signage that indicates proper or appropriate conduct? And, you know, I'm thinking that maybe there, you know, especially in a very warm summer days, dogs are gonna wanna enjoy water, too. So maybe just, I don't know if we have hours of operation, you know, and maybe, I don't know, if there are balls, you know, that are gonna be allowed, just, you know, some parameters on, on how, you know, people can interact with the the new amenity.
Yeah, absolutely. We were planning on putting a sign up, at least a sign, probably near the pavilion, so that when they enter it, we could lay out the rules. We didn't plan on having a lot of signage, but definitely letting people know the basic rules.
Maybe just during hours, when, you know, from sunup to sundown, too. I wanna, I don't know if that's been considered, but just so people aren't using it after.
Yep, good thought.
Alderman Weber?
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to dovetail on that with the dogs. I know that that park is frequently used by a lot of pet owners, they do a lot of walking over there. Since I have the condo at Amberly, I'm frequently over in that neighborhood, and there's a lot of people that have dogs off-leash, you know, throwing balls and frisbees and things, you know, just over time and all times of day. So I would caution if we have, you know, toddlers and things, small children there, to make sure that, you know, dogs, I just, we need to just set the rules of whatever they are, and so that people are aware of it. The good thing is, though, it's not really near a neighborhood super close, so you're not really disturbing the peace, I think, of neighborhoods. But I think, all in all, it's just a great idea. So look forward to hearing how those little kinks are worked out with the guidelines and recommendations.
Thank you.
You know, the geese might enjoy it, too, out there.
Well, we hope not.
Um, yeah, I think, is there gonna be an age restriction at all on this? Because, you know, I could see this being very attractive to some older demographic kids. Talking about that at all, or times when older kids can use it versus younger kids?
We hadn't discussed that. We, you know, in general, it's for kids under probably 12 to 14. We, but of course, adults can go in there and enjoy it with their, with their children. As far as older kids, yeah, I don't know how we'd regulate that. Something we could look at, and I can work with the rec staff to see if we want to have any restricted ages on it.
Well, yeah. Those of us who went to Lake Forest High School, I know in the summers, there was pool hopping that was very popular. This might, might lend itself to that, so you might want to think about it.
Yeah, I have no doubt that we'll discover some things with this first one that, the way it's used, there might be some, some issues that we have to address along the way, but.
I'm sure you will. A good, good project.
When Jason was just talking about cameras, maybe you think about installing one there.
Yes, and we did talk about cameras a little bit. There is some other parks that we're looking at that on, so certainly did come up in the conversation.
Okay, well, if there are no more questions or comments, thank you, Chuck and Jason. So it sounds like a great addition to the portfolio, and as Alderman Goshgarian pointed out, right on track with the master plan. And I'm sure you guys, in your exceptional professionalism, will figure out a way to deal with all of these little things that everybody brought up. So, great, looks like a good, good project. Anything else?
Nope, that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, great. Well, the next thing on our agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Members of the public can provide public comment by calling 847-810-3643, or using the raised hand function on Zoom. So we'll wait a minute here and see if we have any callers or any raised hands.
Mr. Mayor, we have a raised hand. It is Kelly Cohen. Give us a moment, we'll bring that person on.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kelly Cohen. I live at 50 Northwestern Avenue. Good evening, and I appreciate the ease of communicating during the pandemic. Thank you all for your personal time and dedication to our community. It doesn't go unnoticed. Tonight, I want to address a longstanding, community-wide challenge that we've had. It's multifaceted, multi-dimensional. I present one simple change to the policy that might help with this small portion to alleviate some of the problem. Basically, a step in the right direction. The issue at hand is the afternoon congestion of traffic along Deer Path Road in Hastings. Through city publications and master planning investigations, the city has performed over the last several years, a collection of data has been available to paint a broad picture of the issue. Growing through traffic along Deer Path Road has been increasing over the last 15 years. Weekdays, starting at 3:00 PM, a spike in eastbound traffic begins. Concurrently, a standstill line of cars begin to form along Hastings Road. This line of cars begin behind the rear parking lot of DPM and extend onto Deer Path Road in both east and westbound lanes. Along Hastings, during the dismissal time of DPM, there are upwards of 100 cars idling for up to an hour. Each day, there are a dozen, or each, excuse me, each week, there are Each day, there are a dozen, or each, excuse me, each week, there are dozens of near misses in terms of head-on collisions along Hastings Road. Cars pass in the opposite directions, going over the double-yellow lines and drive through the wrong direction to oncoming traffic. There is no space on either side to pull over, and this creates a potential for tragedy. Daily preschool families exiting Kinder Haven are tasked with making it out of the area safely. This is not only aggravating for families, but also downright brightening. Over the last several years, staff at the preschool have received many communications from parents expressing this concern. For the reasons of safety, I've stated above, a simple alleviation to a small portion of the traffic would be to allow parents to pick up at the cul-de-sac at the end of Pembroke. It abuts to the large sidewalk on Hastings Road by the school. This throughway exists specifically to encourage pedestrian use. Yet during the only significant time of day that it could help, the most practical time, picking up a pedestrian is prohibited by law from the hours of 3:00 PM till 5:00 PM. Encouraging pedestrian traffic has been a point of reference to eliminating congestion in our city. And existing paved sidewalks have been refurbished recently. Allowing it a 30-minute window to have parents pick up their kids during a 50 50 feet of space on Pembroke, I think would really allow a significant reduction in traffic along Deer Path, which takes upwards of an hour to get through when you're picking up your child from Deer Path by the time you get home, which is kind of ridiculous when I live two miles away. So it's just a suggestion, and hopefully it can be thought about in terms of, just, just for safety purposes, getting some of those cars off of Hastings and off of Deer Path in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The, you know, we have a traffic safety committee, which I think has already spent many, many hours trying to figure out the situation around Deer Path. And, but I think they can, they can certainly take this under consideration. It sure would be nice if people would use school buses every once in a while.
And, you know, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add on to that while, I know the traffic safety committee would be happy to review the Pembroke parking issue, and certainly we'd want to engage the neighbors and the neighborhood on that. I will say that we had commissioned an engineering study with Gee Walt Hamilton to look at the possibility of installing more sophisticated smart street lighting technology and systems that would allow us to, you know, to really control and schedule the lights remotely. And I know that's a conversation I've had as a result of this issue with my counterparts at school district 67. So we're in the middle of, in fact, I think we're probably wrapping up sort of the analysis of understanding what some changes to the technology would do, not just for alleviating the traffic at Deer Path Middle School, but also then any indirect implications it would have for traffic on Green Bay and elsewhere in the community. I know the school district is eager to have that conversation with us, potentially partner with us on some cost sharing, so all I can say is I know it's a source of enormous community frustration for the parents picking up their kids and for anyone else who's, you know, has the unfortunate, you know, bad timing or misfortune to end up on Deer Path at that time. So we're working on it, and I hope to have more to report in the near future.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers or raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is committee reports. First, we'll hear from the Public Works Committee. Jim Lockaffier has a little report on streets policy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. I did prepare just one short overview presentation slide on the complete streets topic this evening. If I, if I could just be given the ability to share my screen, I'll go ahead and pull that up. Thank you. And so when we reference complete streets, really, what we're referencing is a transportation approach that looks to promote future street projects with incorporating and considering the needs of all travelers, regardless of age, ability, or mode of transportation. This complete streets topic or approach method has been around now for numerous years. And really, the overarching agency that has really been pushing this, this complete streets approach is the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning CBAM. And with that, with it being around now for, for some years, many municipalities in Illinois, including some of our surrounding communities, have adopted complete streets policies, very much so similar to the one that appears within your agenda packet tonight. And what, what's great about this approach, especially here in Lake Forest, is really it's, we're, we're following many practices already incorporating these things through our Public Works Department. And really, this policy is just taking a, a step to formalize these, these different practices. And, and with that, with adopting, if the, the policy is in fact adopted this evening, we're not going to see really too many significant changes to our public works operations. And also, we're not finding the city or committing any specific CINDY funding to, to this policy. And then lastly, just, just to quickly highlight, this last bullet point is really the reason why, in, in terms of timing, this, this policy is appearing on your agenda this evening. And it's because there is an upcoming grant opportunity for which we'll be applying for by the end of March. And that is the Lake County Council of Mayor's Surface Transportation Program. Recently, this program just updated its, its evaluation criteria and award methodology to now award some significant points to any grant application that is backed by a complete streets policy. And this is important, and just these sub-bullet points here, we, we have actually been successful in the past in securing some STP funding for the Waukegan and Everett Intersection Improvement Project, and what I'll refer to as the Base Project. And then this upcoming spring, again, by that March deadline, the two applications we will be submitting a, a grant application for is, again, Waukegan and Everett, the Intersection Improvement Project, but this time with that incorporation of the right-hand turn lane. We're going to look for some additional funding for that west, that westbound Everett turn lane to head northbound on Waukegan. And then also the Waukegan-Westley Intersection Improvement Project. Those two, we're really looking forward to submitting those grant applications. We think we have a really great chance, and with an approved complete streets policy, we'll even be better situated. So with that, we are seeking City Council's approval via the Omnibus Boat Consideration to approve that draft complete streets policy that's included in your packet tonight. And I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Jim? Alderman Romo.
Yeah, this isn't exactly on point, Jim, but while we have you here and we're talking about transportation and grants, is there any news yet on that grant having to do with the sidewalks and Whispering Oaks? Have we heard on that yet?
Not quite yet. You're referencing our application for the Safe Routes to School program. And that is, I mean, that is absolutely something that is a part of this overall complete streets, you know, approach. We have not heard back yet, and we're not expecting to hear back until probably late spring or early summer.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay, well, if it gets us points in grant applications, that sounds like a good idea, so. So thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Next item is also a Public Works report on the Deer Path Road water main improvements from Byron Koops.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I just want to make sure you guys can hear me.
Yep.
Right, I've been having some treble with the mic lately, so, all right. Well, good evening. I'm going to give a report on the Deer Path Road Water Main Improvement Project. So this project is replacing an undersized eight-inch water main with a larger 12-inch water main on Deer Path from Awani Lane to Golf Lane. This project was identified as a priority in the 2021 water study for, for a few reasons. The age, it's about 80 years old. Brakes and the consequence of breaks in the future, as well as increasing the east-west transmission capacity. I wanted to give a little bit of history of what has changed since this eight-inch water main was installed in the 1940s. So there's really a, a few things that have changed. So there's been a large increase in population, almost double, and development growth in southwest West Lake Forest. Really, there's been an increased capacity or a demand for capacity from the lake out west. Two other changes that have really affected how the system operates is the water tower relocation. So that was originally further east by the lake. And now it's been relocated in the 80s to its current location. And then another major change that affects how the system operates is the addition of the Wesley Pump Station. So none of these factors were in place whenever the water main was sized and installed in the 1940s. So upsizing to a 12-inch water main in this section will help correct some of those challenges, as well as providing additional capacity in the future for any more growth in the southwest part of town. In terms of budget, the budget was $1,025,000. If you look at the chart on the right, we received seven bids, which we were pretty happy with. The low bid was just over $974,000. The other part of this project that's really important is timing. So there's two projects that we're coordinating with, and we want to take advantage of their schedule. So those are the Idle Pump Station, which I'm sure everyone's heard about. They're wrapping up later this year. They're going to resurface Deer Path in late July, early August. So our hopes is to get our project completed before that work. The other project we're trying to coordinate with is the ComEd Bridge replacement on Deer Path, on the bike path there. So they are looking to start over spring break. And we want to take advantage of some road closure that they're going to have during that time. So basically, we want to just have the most disruptive part of our work also be at the same time, so we're not doing it further on a road that, you know, as someone mentioned earlier, already has some traffic issues. In terms of schedule, we're looking to begin March 15th with some advanced work, marking of utilities, saw cutting, and what we refer to as pot-holing, which is basically just locating some utilities before we start the work. The next week, we'll be utilizing the, the closure of Deer Path, you know, for the ComEd Bridge that I just mentioned, the week of spring break. And we will be doing the two crossings that we have across the road at this time. So after spring break, our contractor will continue, and is looking to complete the project by the end of May. We designed the project to directionally bore it compared with traditional open cutting. So this will help us reduce traffic impacts. Most of the work will be on the north side of the road, and they'll be able to directionally bore most of it, which will help kind of reduce those impacts. The other thing I kind of wanted to mention was the communication outreach with the amount of projects we have going on this year. Outreach and communication is important for all of these. We've already started drafting the letter with the, with our communications manager. And pending approval, we will be sending that out in the next few days to give about two to three weeks' notice to residents in this area before we get started. It included as part of the Omnibus Agenda, and with that, I can take any questions.
Questions for Byron? Ah, okay. No questions. Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
See how much we can combine on that street at the same time and at least minimize the duration of the pain, so.
Definitely, that's what we're trying.
Okay, well, thank you. Next, we have a report from the Environmental Sustainability Committee by Alderman Romo.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to chair the Environmental Sustainability Committee and for the chance it's provided me to work with and be inspired by the staff, residents in our community, our community not-for-profit groups, and my fellow committee members, and importantly, the other members of the City Council. I have a brief slide presentation tonight. If we can share the screen. I think Joe Gabanski is supposed to be in charge of these. Yep, thank you. Well, last June 1st, I provided an update. Well, we're not quite there yet, Joe, but that's fine. We, I provided an update to the City Council regarding our committee's efforts to identify some strategic priorities for the upcoming year. These priorities, as you may recall, were identified through various engagements that we conducted, including a survey that each of you completed, and thank you. It was done to gauge the perspectives of the City Council and the, to gauge the support for a variety of sustainability topics. The survey also helped us identify areas where council members and city staff had alignment. The results of this engagement were very helpful in providing direction to the ESC for establishing areas of policy focus. Next slide, please. Well, as we reviewed the survey results and initiatives, there were several that rose to the top. There was strong alignment of priorities. Others tended to be more in the middle, and some had a lower amount of alignment or support. But importantly, I think, as I've pointed out before, none of them had real red flags saying we don't support this initiative. But we learned through this process that we need to model leadership for our residents, as well as other communities, in order to make meaningful changes regarding sustainability. In other words, we need to set an example as the city. We can't ask residents to engage in sustainability actions that the city is not itself currently doing. An example of a current initiative that we're undertaking is looking to see if we can put solar installations on some of our municipal buildings. Additionally, environmental impact, not just cost benefit, we felt should be weighed when evaluating where we prioritize our efforts. In other words, it's important to keep in mind that while additional funding may be needed upfront for some capital investment, it may end up saving Lake Forest money in the long run. Sometimes, for example, for stormwater projects, for park improvements, for bio swales, bluff restoration, it may open the door to outside funding opportunities that would not otherwise be available. And perhaps more importantly, these types of enhancements, if done thoughtfully and carefully, can create the kind of place people want to live in the future. And all these points were important to us as a committee when we sat together last June trying to determine which priorities were important to us as a committee. In addition to our top priorities, the committee looked at initiatives that would stress or challenge us, such as reducing greenhouse gas emissions in our community, for example, or looking at solar power for our municipal buildings. These not only have powerful sustainability impacts, but they also demonstrate to our community that we are committed to sustainability. Some themes emerged through the sustainability assessment that was completed, and certain categories offered opportunities for the city to build upon for the future. These categories were greenhouse gas emissions, which is basically climate resilience, stormwater management, waste management reduction, and health and wellness. Thank you. Next slide, please. Last year, as part of the capital planning process, we dipped our toes into these areas. Last year, as part of the capital planning process, we dipped our toes into these areas and allocated approximately $63,000 of additional capital funds to complete a couple of projects and to basically green them up. We've talked about these in the past. We've installed bioswales at South Park, EV charging stations at the new Old Elm Sheridan parking lot as we redid that. We purchased a hybrid vehicle, which is pretty snazzy-looking from the picture. We also installed some stormwater quality structures at the old Elm Sheridan lot that filters the water runoff before it flows into our ravine system into the Fort Sheridan Nature Preserve. And we also did some ravine infrastructure improvements at Ringwood Ravine, which slowed down some of the velocity of the water and helped filter some of the water before it went into Lake Michigan. Next slide, please. So here's what we've been working on based on the direction that the council provided us last year. We are in the process of collecting greenhouse gas emissions for the community. This data collection process allows us to move toward a deeper understanding and engagement process to identify specific goals that will help us reduce our climate impacts. But we can't make those determinations, of course, without first understanding the extent of our current footprint. And that's what we're hoping that this study will show us. And it also may ultimately result in setting greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, which we're very excited to begin to look at. As you're aware, we're also investigating solar power at our various municipal facilities. And these are tiny little facilities that we're talking about. We're talking about Municipal Services Building, the Public Safety Building, the Recreation Center, and the Water Treatment Plant. As we've discussed, we received ten proposals, and we're still in the process of looking those over and hope to be able to present more on this at our March meeting. We've also been looking at ways to expand our communications on environmental topics. I'm sure you've all seen some of these. We've put things in the dialogue. We have things going out on social media, and we have our Sustainability Sunday series. Our weekly newsletters contain a lot of information on sustainability. And city staff are also working closely with community partners, such as Lake Forest Open Lands and the League of Women Voters, to educate riparian owners on proper ravine management and maintenance. This year, for example, we may update the riparian landowners brochure and even do some targeted mailings to riparian owners and possibly offer a riparian owners seminar in conjunction with Lake Forest Open Lands and some other community not-for-profits. Recognizing that many of these properties are privately owned, we want to be very intentional about making these property owners aware of these issues and connecting them with the appropriate resources. In addition to these broader initiatives, I just want to highlight other areas where we've seen sustainability begin to permeate our decision-making. We have offered residents access to solar renewable energy credits through our community solar program. We're hoping to beef this up even more going forward. I know that in my family, we are every month achieving savings by enrolling in these solar renewable energy credits. Our Public Works Department and Fleet Section are continually looking to accelerate the conversion of our fleet to gasoline alternative vehicles, particularly hybrids. Our Rethink Recycling Program continues to make a tremendous impact. We've been able to reduce our recycling contamination rates from 25% to roughly 16% in only a year and a half, and that program continues. We are installing stormwater quality structures in parking lots or bioswales in order to enhance the water quality of our runoff that flows through our ravines and into Lake Michigan by filtering out water debris and harmful hydrocarbons. And we are also looking at ways to increase access to our open spaces and invest in our bike trail connections throughout the city. For example, we're rebuilding the Illinois and Woodland Road pedestrian bridges, and we are installing a new bike path on Route 60 for which we already received a significant grant. In addition, Chuck Myers has been meeting with Lake Forest Open Lands to investigate the possibility of converting some of the city's mode areas to native natural areas. It's already a part of the proposed beach restoration project, as many of you may recall. Chuck Myers is also taking part in a regional discussion about the feasibility of converting some of our lawn maintenance equipment to electric or battery-powered. So we've already made a lot of progress, and there is a lot to celebrate. Next slide, please. As we look ahead to the upcoming year and work on those initiatives that we've completed, I want to share a couple of the areas. This is sort of a preview of what the committee started to discuss at our next set of priorities. They're in no particular order, but these are from our most recent meetings. As the city continues to set an example for the community with its investment in green infrastructure, we're going to investigate ways we can help or encourage our residents to invest as well. We now have projects which hold demonstrative value for videos, articles, and other outreach tools, and we can share these with the community, again, leading by example. Might we consider solutions beyond onsite investigations and consultations? Perhaps we create incentives such as reduced permit fees or other resources to help make this investment more enticing to residents. For example, we already have reduced building permit fees for solar geothermal energy installations and for EV charging station installations in residence. Perhaps we use this as a model for green infrastructure enhancements. I know the Public Works Department has asked us specifically to look into this. We are also exploring composting opportunities for residents and further promotion of our earth machines. We might investigate these further, recognizing that the city is in a unique position of having to pay for its own waste disposal and the impact that this decomposing food waste can have on our environment. This presents the city with a tremendous educational opportunity. Additionally, the committee would like to explore ways we can reduce our use and collection of single-use plastics, perhaps leading the way as a city, and discouraging also vehicle idling throughout the community, another initiative we're looking at possibly promoting through signage. With concurrence from the council, of course, we will work with staff to better lay out an implementation schedule for these initiatives as we work to close the loop on the initiatives currently underway. So there's a lot on the table, and we certainly realize that there's a limit to how much staff time can be spent on this. So as a committee, we will look to further prioritize an implementation plan for some of these initiatives. Next slide, please. While we discussed focusing on basically four initiatives, first, we're also thinking about ways to celebrate our successes and continue to highlight, educate, and raise awareness on these issues. Additional opportunities we've explored but have not yet made a priority include possibly hosting an event around the new Route 60 bike path and the opening of the Deer Path Road pedestrian and bike bridge and the Woodland and Illinois Bridges. We might even explore further opportunities as outlined in the city's comprehensive plan. How about some wayfinding maps to show bike and pedestrian path connections? The possibility presents itself of maybe holding a community event at Everett Park to talk about natural fertilizers and pesticide-free weed control alternatives for some of our parks. Last spring, you may recall, the city, along with Lake Forest Open Lands, Green Mines, the League of Women Voters, and high school and college, and the high school and college hosted a beach cleanup, and it provided an excellent teaching and messaging opportunity on the issues of plastic in our environment. And we may be looking at doing this again this year possibly, and other ways to enhance our lakefront habitat. As mentioned before, perhaps we would be hosting a riparian landowners seminar with Open Lands and other not-for-profits and offer resources to residents to properly care for these important natural resources. How might we also create space to educate property owners on maybe edible gardening? Is there a need for a community garden somewhere? Can we provide opportunities to educate residents on native landscaping? Are there some sites we could explore for a possible community garden? Maybe working in partnership with some of our not-for-profits that already exist and some of the schools or Lake Forest College. So those are some of the very exciting initiatives that are being discussed at the Environmental Sustainability Committee. And I hope as we move into the budget process that some of these crystallize and will be coming forward to the council with some of these proposals. But it's a very exciting time on the committee. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to be involved in this and to work together with staff, the council, my fellow aldermen, and the community on these initiatives. It's been incredibly rewarding. So thank you. And the next slide, are there any questions?
Questions for Alderman Rommel? Okay, well, oh, Alderman Karas.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Melanie, I just, for a nascent committee, I think it's quite extraordinary and impressive how much your committee, the progress that your committee has made in a short period of time. And there are just, it's just an enormous sort of scope of ideas and work to think about and address as a community, as a community, and it's exciting. So I'm, and your passion is, you know, it's obvious to all of us that you have a great deal of interest and passion in this area, and like we all should. So I'm, thank you for leading this effort for us.
Well, thank you. As I say, it's certainly been a group effort, and I thank you all for your support.
Other comments? It's great to see so much progress in such a hurry since, you know, we just created this committee, what, a little over a year ago? And I know there's been lots of input from all the members of the committee, and I know the staff has been doing double time to try to keep up. So that's, that's to everybody's credit, but again, prioritization is critical. So anyway, if there are other questions or comments for Alderman Rommel, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is items for Omnibus vote consideration. We have, let's see, 12 items, so bear with me as I go through this. First is approval of the January 7th, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Second is approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring members of boards and commissions, specifically Phil Hartung, who is retiring from the Senior Resource Commission. Thank you, Phil, for your dedication and commitment to the community. Third is consideration of ordinances approving code amendments to allow mobile food and beverage vendors to operate in the city of Lake Forest as part of special community events and, or as part of special community events and establishing a permit fee. We discussed this in more detail in our last meeting, and this is final approval. Fourth, consideration of ratification and approval of expenditures relating to environmental remediation, demolition, and stabilization of the property at 50 Maywood Road, and authorization to enter into contracts. This is an approval by motion. Just for reference, this is the Joytime property. Number five, approval of an advancement of fiscal year 2023 capital funding for the purchase and installation of a splash pad at Townline Park to Landscape Structures, Inc. in the amount of $300,000. Sixth is approval to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Mariani Landscape for grounds maintenance services at Forest Park in the park's fiscal year 2023 budget for an amount not to exceed $51,958. Let's see, I skipped one. I'm going to go back to number six. Approval to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Landscape Concepts Management for citywide grounds maintenance services for an amount not to exceed $177,846. Moving back on schedule to number eight, waive the bid process and approve a purchase of epoxy floor materials with ICP Construction, Inc. in the amount of $56,787. Nine is approval of the complete streets policy that Jim Lockifear presented earlier. Number 10 is award of the low bid for the concrete streets curb and sidewalk replacement project to Schroeder and Schroeder, Inc., and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement in an amount not to exceed $185,000. Eleventh is approval of an easement agreement between the city of Lake Forest and the trust for 500 Golf Lane. This is related to the water main project that we discussed. Number 12, award of the low bid for the Deer Path Road water main improvements to Joel Kennedy Construction Corporation, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement in the amount of $974,241, as well as approving a 10% contingency in the amount of $97,424 for a total project cost of $1,071,665, and the advancement of fiscal year 2023 capital improvement project funding in the amount of $850,000. Is there any item that any member of the council would like to have removed or taken separately? Okay, hearing none, I would request a motion to approve the 12 Omnibus items as presented.
That moves.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Karas?
Hi.
Alderman Rommel?
Hi.
Alderman Notes?
Hi.
Alderman Preschler?
Hi.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Hi.
Alderman Bushman?
Hi.
Alderman Weber?
Hi.
Seven yay, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is additional items for discussion or comments by council members. Are there any comments that any council members would like to raise? Alderman Rommel?
I just want to thank the Lake Forest Junior Women, Junior Garden Club for inviting me to make a presentation to them on the Environmental Sustainability Committee and to thank Elizabeth Batista, their president, for working through. It was a 40-minute presentation with a lot of questions and comments from the women who were on the Zoom call. Women, I don't know if there were any men. There may well have been. But it was a great opportunity, again, to get our message across as a city that we are working toward these sustainability initiatives, and it was a marvelous platform to be able to get a little broader audience for some of these initiatives. So, so thank you. It was, I think it was well-received, and I very much appreciated the opportunity. And I think the city appreciates the opportunity that was given to us by the garden club to do that. So thank you.
Alderman Rommel, did you fly solo on that? Have some staff support.
Mike Strong was there with me every bit of the way, as usual.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, there being no further comments, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
That moves.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay. The meeting is adjourned. See you all in person the next time.